I, uh, yeah, I saw that, she mentioned it the other night. I said, I really don't know who he is. And I said, after I saw his picture, I do know who he is because he come over and helped clean up all these houses when Eunice was moving from point A to point B. I mean, I don't, I forget how many trailer doors and stuff. He helped clean down the cities to wherever the dump was, uh, there was a lot. And, uh, he's not that old.
Well, Eunice passed away too, they said. Eunice Cross, his mother?
I, I don't know.
That's what Bart Rennie told Piggy and I this morning. He said, yeah, he said, could we take out my cross? And he said, well, you know, his mother died too, don't you?
Oh, yeah, I didn't know that. She didn't say, tell me any, because you just, she picked it up on the phone before, whatever.
I don't know who else he is, and I did talk to her today. So, she said she was, she said later, she said she looked it online and you weren't her contact.
Yeah, it'll be late. Yeah, that's what Bart Rennie told us. He says Eunice passed away too. Cause we were thinking, that's why we have a, maybe a double ceremony or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, I read the news on that. The cross, there was no service.
Sure, sure. What do you think of their opted contract? Uh, uh, we're not getting anything, really.
Oh, because we got a lot on them, yes, I'm very excited.
Uh?
Oh, yeah, that, she said, what?
Well, that's true.
You ask, yeah. I usually joke for fifteen minutes and then I babble, but for three hours, I can't do that tonight.
What's that?
He said, do you have a stain or are you bleeding underneath?
I'm just seeing, I don't know what.
Or a stain or not?
I don't think I'm bleeding.
No, it's one switch over here.
But it could be.
It's not on?
One switch here, man. There we go. Just put these up to you. And councilman, you, you are here.
Thank you.
We'll call the meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Public Forces, One Nation Under God, Indivisible, and Everlasting.
Could we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will now have a market analysis compensation study by Paul Ness.
Yes, yes, I know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, so I only have a few minutes. Sometimes I spend one, two, and three hours on this, just going into detail. First down committee has run two things and Sarah, I didn't know how to administer a state case, but um, so I wanted to just highlight the three major phases, let's say, and then we can talk about the, the page, the three steps, if you want. The first thing we did, uh, and are still working on, refinancing all the job documentation.
Oh, can I have you, before I let the podium or turn the mic on?
Oh, yeah.
We get the, thank you.
Green light was already on?
Green light.
Okay, so I gotta stay put. Um, so, job documentation is the, uh, the first thing. Employees are still going through job descriptions and I think even with administration looking at that possible add to staff and, uh, possible changes, you know, there's, uh, there's a little more thought that needs to be put behind it. I'll still be around to clean up, you know, the job descriptions, take in edits. In regard to job descriptions, I do, our job documentation, I do want to tell you, it's more than the job descriptions and the job descriptions are pretty heavy duty. I think you guys have ones existing that have a few pages, but mine can be five, six pages. There's a lot of content, but they don't spell out everything still. But I'm, you know, I'm comfortable with having all of that in there. Uh, there's also a, um, a tear off sheet like we do with, uh, personnel policies that, um, I'll just leave in your hands so you guys don't forget. There is a few, but this will be an employee acknowledging form that I recommend. Um, so just like personnel policies, the employee signs it, you know, that, showing that they received the job description or read it. And, um, pretty straightforward, you'll see three sections there. And then there are some addenda. You, you see this in the report, but there's some things that will be added on to a base job description, um, like related to maybe the administrative support ones, related to deputy clerk duties. If we don't build them into the actual job, like the accounting tax slash, you know, we're calling it deputy clerk as it's evolved. There will be an addenda for the emergency management director for the police chief's position. And talking about that, there will be some, I think, cleanup, and this is me talking as a non-attorney, but in regard to ordinances, you do have, uh, a civil defense ordinance that still dates back to that nineteen fifty-eight or whatever it is law, that talks about, um, fallout shelters. I bet you the police chief probably doesn't know where all the fallout shelters are. So, it's, it's got some age behind it and obviously we've moved into that era of emergency management. So I just wanted to highlight that because I, I look at that stuff, I just peek at it and want everything consistent. Another thing that I'd want consistent is the administrator ordinance. There is one that, um, even though it doesn't specify, it does say the administrative clerk treasurer's positions created. Well, they're supposed to be combined and, uh, there's some duties laid out. There's not qualifications, but we normally want to put, uh, job duties like this in an ordinance because it is your local law and it's hard to change, you have to amend or repeal. So job descriptions are important enough, they're, I consider them at the policy level because they're approved by the council. But I think you want to just work with the city attorney in the league and get, get that consistent. You don't have qualifications in here, which is good, but in a way, you know, this, this is supposed to precede or take priority. So I'd rather just have everything in the job description, but you should combine the offices still, a clerk treasurer, city administrator, and establish a city administrator, but maybe just have it high level, if that makes sense. Um, the next phase was called job evaluation and I didn't do a lot there. There's these point ratings that we assign to the positions. You'll have a lot of detail, I think, in the report. Uh, we have to do it by state law, the pay equity law. Um, basically shows the difficulty, complexity of a job and it kind of looks at the skill, effort, responsibility, and working conditions, all these ingredients that make up a job, not the person. We're not doing performance evaluation, we're doing what's called job evaluation. I only reevaluate one position that has changed. You guys had already recognized it really in terms of pay, but we always like to, we should reevaluate it first for a, this point rating, then see where it translates into the pay slash step structure. So one thing we did in regard to pay and step slash step structure is kind of organize things, let's say, a little bit better. Uh, you'll see, uh, one of the bigger epimxes or charts is that internal structure and that should be, yeah, right inside your front cover. And this is grouping the jobs into, uh, into pay grade groupings, but they're based on these point ratings at first that mean, you know, the, the difficulty, complexity of job. This is kind of how you organize things, the convention. We have to do it by pay equity law, but we should be doing it as employers anyway. Uh, you know, private employers do it too. Um, so I only, only, uh, changed one point rating, reevaluated, we call it. And then I think I'd given a point rating for the newer position, but that's going to be more comparable to the administrative slash communications assistant, if you, if you do add that position to staff. So, we basically, um, try to organize things a little bit better and, uh, if we are going to talk about pay, I just have a bigger, uh, step structure. And yes, these are bigger numbers and I mean, not just font type, but obviously in terms of dollar amount. And it's not lost on me, we have one, yeah, um, we have four. It's not lost on me, the pay level here. You know, it's still, you guys are, maybe you might think of yourself as a smaller city, but, you know, in greater Minnesota, you're actually up there in the pack of maybe, is it seventy cities after you take out the metro area? Being a city of twenty-five hundred, at least twenty-seven hundred. Um, you know, most of the cities, six hundred of them are below five hundred population, I believe. So just to point that out, and you're in an interesting area, you'll read in the report. You know, I, um, just around Saint Cloud and I did all these different kinds of slices of the market. Um, and I don't feel like I did dramatically, I didn't change your pay level. You guys had a strong pay level, um, you know, and it's a smaller employer, obviously, not, not that many employees, but, um, and maybe, how do you say it? Um, maybe somewhat flat. I stretched it out a little bit, I guess, and made you a little more competitive, I thought, with the higher pay grades, which you should be, and I, maybe not look at just, uh, what you guys might consider peers, but competitors. And then if you're hiring from the, let's say, the smaller cities, you look at that group and see what the difference is. So, you know, if you're looking at that bigger chart, um, I highlighted in the report and I think the personnel committee's heard, you know, the more dramatic changes. Um, and like I said, I just, I think I stretched out and, uh, the couple higher pay grades. You saw some higher minimum pay, especially in regard to police officer, but this would be negotiated, of course, uh, in a, in a collective bargaining situation. But some of, um, your minimums were a little bit low. I think they kind of dragged from, um, previous pay ranges when you guys were probably increasing the ranges. I didn't do all this kind of forensic, but, uh, it looked like with having these, pay ranges are sixty percent, that's from the minimum to max, they really got wide. And so we, I tried to get them a little more realistic again. The average out there is thirty percent. And you'll see the lower pay grades are twenty-nine, up to about, you know, fifty for the higher pay grades. But this is stretched over a number of years still. I did not give you a step structure or push one, uh, down your throats that were, you know, we were maxing out in five, six, or seven years, which is, is out there too. And those are double-digit increases with COLA, as you might know, because we're adding the step increase plus COLA. I have, uh, up in the Iron Range, I used to work up there, I haven't done in a while, but they, they jump up in some of those cities in six months to the top. And they'll start at like seventy percent. You know, that's payroll person giving a promotional increase every, I don't know what it is, every two weeks, every month. It's crazy. Um, so I think this is still realistic, it's something that, when I saw the numbers, I'm, you know, I put something in front of you when I'm comfortable and if there's any questions.
So this is just our twenty twenty-one?
This is actually, yes, twenty twenty-one, because I leave it for you. I'm not trying to spend your money next year to, uh, assign a COLA, basically. You know, cost of living, we call them structural adjustments, but it would be cost of living based, um, whatever you look at. You know, some cities do look at the CPI or, one actually is looking at the Social Security Administration, looks at one of the CPIs. But, um, I just say, look at neighboring cities, to be honest, and try to keep it with them. Because one of the points I made in the written report, and if you've seen this online, is that there might have been some lag that I tried to catch up with, with your twos, you know, and whatever you averaged, like, let's say it was ten point seven eight, I think it was, over the last five-year period. And then the market might have averaged around close to fifteen. So there could be a lag depending on the employer from one to five percent. And I'm not trying to change what you did. The past is the past and you guys were making, council makes decisions on a yearly basis, but there's just a reality that there might be, uh, some need to do a market study, I guess, every, let's say, every five years. Um, but you're, you're certainly not taking money away from employees because there was huge, large step increases and there still was probably more accurate cost of living. We, in cities, we've been given above cost of living increases for decades, except for oh eight gave us a reality check. Sorry. So, yeah, you need to update it and then Sarah probably has that, some of that factored in. I was, um, I was echoing a three percent and maybe even higher, but then I'm understanding that there's some budgetary stuff going on. Uh, you'll see higher than three with some cities, you'll see fours, um, you'll see two still. So, so I, I do leave it to the council's discretion, is what I'm getting at.
Does anybody else have any questions for him? Sarah?
Yeah, so, um, with the presentation tonight, um, what my recommendation would be is for, if the council wishes to move forward with this, this new step structure, to adopt that step structure and then we can build that into the new twenty twenty-two budget. Um, right now, I was anticipating three percent is, is what I've been working with, but I will need that direction, you know, and we'll have to discuss that at the budget workshop, um, in two weeks. Um, I did run calculations on what the cost to implement this in twenty twenty-two would be and it would be about eleven thousand, one hundred dollars more to implement this structure than our regular, what, what employees are on track to receive. Um, and that would just be for the non-union employees. Uh, because obviously our union employees, uh, we have a different process that we need to follow. So, um, can I answer any questions on that? I guess my, my recommendation would be if, if we want to move forward to adopt this and then we will work out the COLA with the budget process.
Well, I'm confused because everyone, I, I, this isn't our, what we're getting paid right, or the employees getting paid right now?
No.
Well, where is that piece paper? Because everyone I got is the same identical one.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't give a comparison on the old, the personnel committee probably looked at that, but, uh...
Yep, we did look at it at personnel.
How do you compare apples to apples if you don't have nothing in front of you that says where we're at now?
I just give you the new, though.
I thought it was out at one point, but it wasn't, that's my mistake then.
Yeah.
We did get it at personnel, didn't we?
I believe we did.
But...
Well, I've never seen that.
Well, you have a nine-year to max step structure for all positions and then you'll have sixty percent range spreads, they're really low minimums, but let's say higher max. And, um, some of those percentage steps, mine are maybe three, three percent in the top half, a little higher in the bottom half. Yours are six or seven percent between steps.
Yeah.
I just went through this with the county and they said, you're right here, and then they said, now you're back here because we're going to add steps.
Yeah, that's often done.
We got seven cents.
Well, seven cents initially, but you have more pay growth, of course, over time, uh, you know, because they...
Yeah, but you lose all your, you lost all your, my eight years of service just went out the toilet.
We, uh, we usually don't count, we can't give credit on years of service because the past is the, the past. We can't recredit, it'd be like rehiring you. Um, that's how I say it. We basically don't retrofit structures to the past. But, you know, it's, they made decisions at that time with this, that structure and this is from this day, at least January first, let's say, to moving forward. So, and if you work out your career earnings, you're better off, I'm sure. I do want to say something related to that, though. Based on, two of the employees, I believe, that are in the, the first few steps. One is a police officer and I think one is still, uh, Sarah, that based on the next two or three years, they might have a, a greater progression, faster progression under the existing. So you have to implement a little carefully whether you give it to them all now or over a multi-year.
Yeah.
I just wanted to put that caveat out for the council to consider because we don't do these studies to take money away from employees unless your pay level's changing dramatically.
And that's what I'll stress, when we place, when we, when we place them, the employee will not lose what their normal progression would have been, assuming their, you know, performance is satisfactory. They would not go backwards. They may, as you had pointed out, they may have more steps to go. I know I'm affected by that. I will have more steps to go now than I, I would, I didn't have at, at, you know, the current existing. I can send this out, though, to you again, if, if we need that and it's, this is what we're at right now. We were on a ten-step. It's a ten-step, but we actually increased the department heads, um, to spread them out a bit more.
Yeah, and I understand you're doing the market, but usually for COLA adjustments, I told Sarah this, but I, I like consistency because there doesn't seem to be a rationale, you know, um, if you're making a distinction that way between employees on the COLA increase. You know, so that's where I like, you, you saw with the pay grades nine and ten, I tried to relate it a little more closer to the market, more competitive. But that would, that would assume that you're going to give the same structural adjustment to department heads and employees, just to be clear, non-managers.
And this is in monthly form?
Oh, yeah, so it's minor.
That's how the prior, from nineteen ninety-nine, it was always with to monthly, I don't know why.
They do that because pay equity, we have to report for monthly, perhaps. But I, I like for exempt, non-exempt employees, I like the hourly rate and I like annual, you know, rates for exempt, you know, which you have three of them, FLSA exempt, to be clear, so...
Um, I also could provide, I do have this, um, you sent us a separate progression, would that be helpful for them?
Yeah, that's starting out, um, yeah. That's fine, I think, with the full council. I meant that for the personnel committee, but, uh, it does show where existing employees are. And one thing I try to avoid and you, you hear what I don't do more than I do maybe, but, um, I'm not like a career consultant for employees because I've, I've had to actually cost out, um, career progression earnings, I call them, or something like that, for cities up in the arrowhead because they didn't understand the changeover and I said, no, you're going to be making forty thousand dollars more over, you know, that might be a little of an extreme example, but it was close to that. And, uh, that, of course, got the buy-in that we needed with the unions. But, um, I don't try to look at, you know, I'm not looking at your existing staff. I'm not looking at performance productivity. I'm just looking at the market and what seems to make sense. And if, um, and still leaving all the discretionary stuff to you, if that, that makes sense to the council because I'm not spending your money. Um, so there is, there are a couple employees that would have a stronger progression, faster progression, but it could work out with just this initial implementation. If we draw them out five years, they perhaps might not need a secondary, a two-part implementation. I'm not sure. That's something Sarah could look at and I can double-check or I can help or give you, you know, the input and then you can double-check it. But, um, you guys, I mean, this is a strong pay level and I, I do recognize your benefits package. You know, you guys set the table as a council, it's turned, as far as compensation and there's base pay, but there's other forms of direct pay too, shift differential doesn't factor in a lot of pay. But, um, there's, you know, comp time that's a little more generous with exempt managers where you give a one-to-one ratio after forty. Uh, some cities, it's a higher threshold. You have twelve holidays, you know, I think, and a personal day, the seven weeks of vacation. Uh, and of course, the cost sharing for single and family health insurance, I recognize all that is extremely valuable. And a lot of, some cities, I actually recommend that they value all that, even though you don't always think about it in dollar terms and present that to employees on an annual basis with performance reviews are done. But, uh, I just want to make sure you're, of course, uh, knowing what's maybe, let's say, realistic and puts you in a good place, hopefully to, when you need to rehire, you know, with, or hire with vacancies and then to try to keep staff as best as you can with what you see in front of you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
So the green is where we're at now and we're going all the way to the right or we're going to the first step on the red?
You're going, I think that, that, what we're doing is we're going to implement them and it, it varies on where you're at, you know, not everybody, some people, it costs some, it costs us a couple hundred dollars to implement. Some person, people, it's a thousand, depending on what step they're at. But you go to the next closest step without going backwards. But what they're saying is some of the steps now, they have more steps now because the, the market has driven up that, uh, lane, so to speak, at a higher level. So the progression is the red. On where you can go to now. Green is where you're at, progression is over time where you can go to. Some people will go there in a couple steps, some people still have, they had, you know, three, four steps left on our existing schedule. Now they'll have five, six left because we basically extended it out further.
But on average, it's not, it's not a huge percentage. It almost catches up, it catches up to that lag I was mentioning, based on COLA. Your, your pay grades nine, ten, a little bit more different, you know, I try to be a little more realistic on that.
And so that's where the eleven thousand, one hundred dollars comes in, to, to make that adjustment. That's what the additional cost is estimated for twenty twenty-two.
So it's eleven thousand, something for the whole?
Eleven thousand, one hundred dollars.
Which is...
For the whole staff or...
For the non-union.
And how many union people do we have?
We have, uh, three unionized police officers. If we did the union, it'd be over seventeen thousand. But we have to go a different process with that. They are not, um, you know, we don't, we don't do it that way, we have to bargain.
So aren't the steps your cost of living?
No, they're actually, they're additive. Steps are built in, like a staircase going up to, basically, we're, we're recognizing employee grows in the job, you know, increases in productivity, et cetera. It's nice if you do performance evaluations that give you reviews on that. But the, uh, the, the COLA, the cost of living is actually, it's separate. Um, so that's what, you know, keeps our, our, us in pace with inflation, but the step is supposed to give employees, you know, added growth, basically, for increasing performance and productivity. And that's been decades in the public sector. It surprises some, well, you, you say you work for the county, but it does surprise some, uh, some private sector folks. School districts are the same way with steps and lanes. And I always encourage councils to be, you're doing performance reviews, but you're doing for employee development reasons. I, I do encourage them to at least have satisfactory views so you know you're, you're paying for what you get, you're getting what you pay for. And they actually have that written to union contracts too, by the way, that at least a satisfactory performance review would make an employee eligible for a step. But, that's what councils, when you're budgeting, it's two items, it's COLA and step. And that's why you've, you've been paying out double-digit if you didn't, didn't know or close to it. Uh, this actually will be much less in a budgeting perspective from year to year. Uh, because my steps are three to four percent in the bottom half, three percent in the top half. With a COLA that, let's say, averages three percent, that's going to be much less than existing. But there's more pay growth, like I, we pointed out. So I like to tend to do that. I don't like the double, double-digit increases are like promotions, you know, which is just crazy. Uh, and you see, unions drive that a lot in cities, but I do believe in maxes at some time too, but I guess other cities don't recognize that, you know, maximum pay, that it tops out, so... It's kind of the Lake Wobegon effect.
Anybody, anybody else have anything for Paul?
Then I'll be around, I mean, like, later, you know, through Sarah. I'm not going anywhere.
I, my biggest thing is I, I need a motion or direction. I, um, need to know what you want me to incorporate within the twenty twenty-two budget. And my recommendation would be that is the, that is the place to start with this. A mid-year implementation right now would be difficult, I think, and, and time-consuming. I, the intent of this overall project was to implement at a clean year and a budget cycle.
Well, I'd like to make the motion, we accept that with, starting in twenty twenty-two for the non-union employees. And then we'll start with this new step that Paul made up for us.
I would second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, I will, um, we'll discuss then the COLA when we come back at the budget workshop and that's fine, that's, that's okay. I just need kind of a, a starting point and then we can go from there.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now have open forum, if anybody wishes to express a concern or has something to say about the city, they can come up to the podium, state their name and address and give us a two or minute talk. Okay, we'll move on to department reports. Uh, Bart Kaufman is out on a call, so he can't be here right now. Uh, but as far as discussion on the parking and storage ordinance, that was tabled from last month and what I would like is to keep that tabled until possibly January or February. When we, we've got a lot on our plate right now with all the stuff going on and so I would like to move that back to January or February. I'll make that a motion.
I ha, I have a question. If we table it till January, what's going to happen between it now and January? Are we going to enforce the current ordinance?
We, we will have the, the ordinance on file, but we will not enforce it. Not at this time.
There isn't a motion needed, though, it's still on the table.
Yeah, it was already tabled, so we don't have to bring it back up. We'll just keep it tabled. City engineer, Jared Griffith.
You got me tonight, uh...
Well, you know, I, I just wanted Jared.
Hey, I understand. Uh, you probably saw a little activity over by the police garage. They did some saw cutting yesterday. So, starting to those kind of repairs or maintenance work we discussed this spring is happening. They're saw cutting it now, we're waiting, we're trying to get the concrete sub to commit to a schedule and then we'll build on either side of that. It's, we don't want to open it up and wait for the concrete guy for two weeks, so as soon as we can pin him down on a schedule, you'll see the rest of that start to move forward, so... With that, I'd answer any questions you might have on that or other subject.
Does anybody have any question? Okay, Public Works and Fire Department, Mark Patton Booth.
I'm going to keep it short too tonight. Uh, just one thing John didn't have, the Oliver Utility stuff for Highway twenty-three, Jared Griffith, other co-engineer. Jared Griffith, other co-engineer, has turned in today, I believe it got turned in for the ninety percent final plan. So, um, we're working on numbers with budget and, uh, that's moving right along very good. I think everything's turning out nice on that. Um, water use, just an update on that. You know, we did the DNR, it's been, we're permitted by them. They're telling us we need to, uh, be watching our usage. Um, we did ask for voluntary compliance. People are, and we have cut back. Our use, some people are adhering to it. Um, we did go through eight point six-six million gallons in July, which is high. Um, last year I was actually higher than that. We were eight point two million last year. So the years before that I was in the seven, you know, nineteen and eighteen I had seven-two million. So I'm a lot higher than that. So was last year dry too, I don't know. One thing DNR does is tell us we can only be no more than fifty percent of our January flow. We're six point five million in January. If you take fifty percent, nine point seven-six. So I'm well within my permit. It's just when, if this keeps up, we may be doing a watering ban, um, water restriction, things like that. The wells are holding up good, the levels are holding up good. I can see a drop, but there are nothing to worry about at this time. So we'll keep everybody informed, um, where we're at with that. But this time let's keep it voluntary. Um, only other thing, the pool, last area right now is scheduled for Friday, August twentieth. Uh, biggest thing is we're having a staffing issue after that. Uh, I think we had what, three guards that were available after that date and then I also on the maintenance side lose my summer kids that day. But there was a lifeguard thing really that, um, is drawing that day. So that is the plan right now to shut down at that time. Other than that, um, unless you guys have something for me, I don't think I have anything else tonight.
Anybody have any questions for him? Administration, Sarah Brown.
Yeah, um, just a couple of things, your budget packet, um, should have that out to you by the end of this week or early next. Um, we've been meeting it this week and, and trying to put that together. Um, and then we'll have that workshop session on the seventeenth, um, and we'll set a preliminary budget essentially. So, um, expect more to come soon. And then I'm just looking for a direction on, um, if the council wants to do anything regarding the ma, the recommended masks. Um, it is not required, I want to be clear, it is not required, um, to wear masks. But I know some places are putting it in place. I just want to know what the council's direction is on that so that I can make sure to communicate that with the employees and the public.
Uh, well, as far as I'm concerned, as long as it's not mandated or anything, I don't feel we should force people to do it. If you want to wear a mask, it's up to the individual. Because there's no, like I say, the govern, governor didn't put any mandate on it or nothing. So I think we should just leave it as it is now. If somebody wants to wear a mask and they don't feel safe without it, they can wear their mask. Otherwise, we'll just run business as normal.
I agree with that.
No problem.
I, I think we should just follow the state law, which is no mask, so.
That works, that was just fine for me. I'll make sure to communicate that.
Yeah, you know, if it changes, I guess we have to go with the state law, but it doesn't appear that's happening.
Okay, that works for me. So then, um, unless you have something else for me, I, I guess I want to just keep things moving, so.
Well, I see now we have our police department, Bart Kaufman?
Yes, sir. I apologize, I was a little bit detained at home here, which involved the sheriff's office, not with me, just entirely different matters, so. Uh, I can go over our stats here real quick. Uh, I do have copies too, if everybody wants some. I just made some quick. Uh, our calls right now for the month of July, two seventy-one, they were down. We've got bigger cases that we've been investigating at this time. Uh, we also had some computer issues that was countywide, which involved the Rice Police Department, Foley, Benton County and Sauk Rapids. So a lot of people were, a little, a lot of officers were a little bit down on the self-initiated stops. So our calls did go down a little bit for the last month. Uh, right now we've got two people or two possible ca, uh, openings for part-time positions. We've got about six applications right now at this time. And we do have a possible full-timer that's leaving. We'll probably know more here by the end of August, beginning of September. We do have someone to take his place, uh, that's already in our part-time pool. He'll just be moving over to full-time. I don't believe I have anything else for, for the police department.
Does anybody have any questions for him? Okay, we'll move on to old business, update on the wastewater fiber project. And can, we will consider approval of the Benton County fiber agreement, maybe.
Okay. We got like eighteen different drafts of this agreement going around, so we're trying to verify what's going on.
With the, the fiber agreement, we have gone back and forth, I don't even know how many times. Um, the big items for us, the reimbursement of design costs. The, um, how we're going to build out Foley. Um, how, uh, we're going to ensure that we have, uh, equal access to county and city right-of-way. Um, I think we've, we've resolved the city and county right-of-way issue. We both agreed to a permit process. So, um, they will have to get a permit from us, they will have to grant us a permit. And that will be satisfactory according to our wastewater engineers to, to resolve both the wastewater and the fiber issue. So I think we're okay there. Um, and that's, the, the attorney said the language is fine. Um, we also had agreed to up to, they would reimburse us up to forty-five thousand. Um, we would return with the agreement that they would pay, we would pay or authorize design changes up to forty-five thousand. But beyond that point, they're on the hook, um, or not, or it doesn't move forward. Um, with the build-out of Foley, you'll see this map that I had up here. Um, this map is, the dots are the, uh, city locations that we have prioritized. Um, and the reason we prioritize them is because some of them are required, like areas that we would really need to have connectivity with, with the wastewater system. But also, um, these were, the public buildings were the initial intent with our prior arrangement, our discussions with the provider. So we really want to target these areas, um, get fiber serviced there. Um, and by doing so, we'd, we'd have some city connectivity, but we also get into a lot of areas of the community um, that once we get to that point, building or spreading it out would, would make it easier, um, if we get to those locations. So the county is proposing, uh, providing us a cash of a hundred and seventy-five thousand to assist in this build-out. And then we would leverage a provider accordingly to get it done. Um, I did get another quote on that. My quote came in at just over three hundred thousand, but that was for two conduits. The county is proposing one and I think one is okay from what we've, we've looked at. So, um, we think we have a good chance of getting these locations serviced with that, those dollar amounts that the county is proposing. Um, what other item am I missing? The county did not act on the agreement today. The county, um, maybe Mark can comment on what was discussed.
I went to the board meeting, um, Commissioner Kopinski just updated on the items that we have our differences on yet. Um, that, you know, feels we've worked out what Sarah just described. Um, he's very optimistic we'll get this worked out yet, along with Commissioner Johnson who's on the committee with us. Like I say, I think we are down to just very small items here and hopefully we can hammer this out tonight and get this back.
Um, yeah, um, so I guess here's the thing, we're, we're down to a, a very limited timeframe, extremely limited timeframe. The request of the city council was to have the county present and agreed upon, like an agreement to us that satisfied the conditions that we requested. That did not happen today. Um, however, you know, the council feels, I think it is important to, to recognize that, that abandoning this effort is going to require some additional costs and work on the city's part to get this fiber extension to happen. We do have another option out there, but that is also a lot of staff time and other items that will have to be put in place to do that. Um, I am comfortable giving the county more time. Um, I would just recommend that it's a very short window. Um, I think there is some value. I think we've made some good work on this agreement. Have we gotten everything? No. Um, has the county gotten everything? No, but we've made some very good strides to, to making sure that the city benefits, um, from this arrangement. Mark and I have no interest in being fiber providers. We really don't want to do that, um.
I think in the best interest going with the county is going to be the long, best interest of the city, the county, I mean, the county, the residents. But, you know, they have a lot of bigger pot of money to work with to fund the price of it here.
I have a concern that we, one of the things that I have asked about over the course of this is what about the build-out for our businesses and people that need high-speed internet? And I don't see in the agreement anything that gives the, the city of Foley citizens or businesses any kind of priority in build-out.
Yeah, and that's a very good question.
And no cost plan to do that. That means some dairy farmer can get ahead of, um, you know, a new business or a business in town that really needs high-speed internet. So I don't see any, I see, I don't see any benefit to our citizens. I mean, we, the city might get free internet, but we don't have that many employees. And if we don't have high-speed internet, it is not really vital to what we do. But there are businesses that need high-speed internet. And I would like businesses that need high-speed internet to locate in Foley because we have done all this work to try to provide it for them. And we'd give it to the county and they say, oh, well, they don't have a plan. And I don't see, I, we had talked before and there had been some assurance that the citizens and the businesses of Foley would have a priority and that's gone. So I don't see why we're even doing it.
Yeah, and I, I completely understand where you're coming from because that is, we went at lengths with that discussion as part of the agreement. And that is a non-movement, non-starter at the county level. Um, the best we can do is possibly including language that the city has the same exact access to state and federal funding programs that the county provides. So if they issue a program where they're going to provide grants of thirty percent to providers in Benton County, that the city is in line, just like rural Benton County, we have the same opportunity to utilize those funds. Um, but beyond that, there is no movement on that item. It.
No, they will not budge on the build-out of Foley.
So what, what's the benefit with going with that?
They are going to pay three hundred twenty-five thousand to get the pipe here. They're going to give us a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to build out to our things and they're going to pay forty-five thousand dollars.
It used to be a hundred and eighty-five, how to get down to a hundred and seventy-five?
It was always a hundred and seventy-five.
It was always one seventy-five.
It was always one seventy-five?
Yeah, so that's what, five hundred forty thousand they're going to put towards this project.
And they haven't paid a penny?
We haven't agreed to anything yet.
Yeah, but we've expended money dancing around their requirements.
We have expended money, but they are, they are legally bound to reimburse us with the execution of this agreement.
John, we're giving away the project for, for nothing.
Go ahead, Jared.
So, once the, it gets here, so does there have to be a line run to each business? Or does it have a big router? Or how does this work once you get fiber here, I guess is the question? I mean, are we digging up streets to run a line or what?
I'm not an expert on that subject and these two have been more involved, I'll maybe let them take a stab at that.
It's going to come in right here.
By snap business?
Yep. We already have this conduit in because we need the connectivity from our lift station to, um, our, from our lift station to the, uh, equalization pond. So that's already in the plans, that has been in the plans for the whole time. And then we are putting in these items here with the Highway twenty-three project, not up here, this is just future, but. Um, so the gap was, is here. Once you get it in through the corridor, then you build off of that. But the idea of building into, using that money to build into all these green dots, which is what we have estimated, we will be pretty darn close to accomplishing with that, those funds, that payment to the county. Then we would, we would build out from there. So once you get it that close, we are a higher density, you know, location. Once you get it there, the idea is the provider then continues to spread it throughout. You got to make the first long jaunt in. But it's going to be a combination of the city and providers working together to get this done.
So they can use the existing lines in the ground or they got to put new lines in the ground?
They're going to put new lines in the ground. And in some cases, they can run them overhead too. It's not ideal. But like we talked about, if we have to get to a really difficult spot and we run it overhead until we have a road project that we can put it in, that may be the solution for the time being. You know, the, the, I think the other thing that's important to remember is this new industrial park, that will be serviced right away because that line is coming in right there. So we're going to have a huge hub already available and the huts, they're all going to be located here. So that, like some of the new attraction that we're looking to do, um, that will happen, I think, very relatively easily. Um, and then also coming up, the school is, is going to be given strand and they're going to run. Well, there's our opportunity to run the rest of the way and service like our northern housing, you know, along County Road forty-three. So the, there are some projects that I think will facilitate the expansion naturally.
Well, I'd like to give them like a, another week to get it all completely finalized. I mean, I know, like I said, we're really short on time because we've got to get the, get this done so we can get the bids out and get the project started.
August seventeenth would be the very latest.
Anybody else have any?
August seventeenth?
August seventeenth, he said.
I'd motion this.
I don't understand why it isn't here today.
Yeah, I'd motion this agreement out.
We said two weeks. The mayor very strongly said two weeks and I agree.
I questioned the county administrator on that because I didn't see it on their agenda when it came out. Um, and the response was that he didn't have, um, things back from legal. Um, we got the latest revision from their legal late yesterday. And so, um, we worked through that last night and this morning and got it back to them relatively quickly. But we had sent some revisions over Friday morning and, and that was the first response we got back was late yesterday. We were hoping something would come on quickly, but it, they just decided not to act. I don't know if they talked about why or they just.
They did not say why. Um, I don't know if it's because they knew there was changes or, you know, what we had sent, they made red line back to us.
This, this thing has gone back and forth so many times. I mean, it's, it's been brutal as far as.
When this agreement, wasn't there some, wasn't there some question where they wanted to maybe change the route somewhat on the way out there? If that was possible, they, they would want to do that?
If there is, that would all be their expense, but right now it's being designed per our sewer.
Correct, yeah.
And, uh, that would have to be above and beyond anything.
But if they did that, they have to pick up the total expense.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're absolutely not changing our route.
Well, would, would two weeks be too much time or?
My, my worry is they don't approve it at the seventeenth and then we're, that, that's the only concern. If they don't approve it by the seventeenth, I don't think we can possibly do anything else.
It has to be seventeenth at the latest.
I mean, that's really pushing it. I mean, I'm talking, they're going to have like a couple of days to turn this around for bids.
She does, you know, when I was talking to you, when I was talking to you earlier, I know you said they will have meetings next week on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday with their budget.
Yeah, they're, they're not official, like they're not the county board meetings where they do action items. They just listen to budget presentations, but they're all convening for budget presentations.
And if they're, if they're all there, they could call a special meeting too. Because we just can't sit here and wait and wait and wait for them. I mean, I would, I would like to see it done in a week, but if, if worse comes to worse, if the seventeenth will still work, then I'd wait till the seventeenth, but I just assume we got to get it done as quick as we can.
But basically, all they're giving us right now is the service to the city. And an amount to hook. and an amount to hook up to our project.
All that money, yeah.
They are not going to fund any build-out. If there's any build-out to where we want to go further, that's going to be entirely up to us.
That'll be up to the city, yeah.
The total cost for any build-out after it gets here, it's going to be entirely up to the city. They're not going to give us any money.
They haven't said that. They have three point five.
Well, they're sure indicating that.
They have three point five million to spend, they haven't said Foley would not get any more. They haven't said Foley will get any more, I will clarify that, but, um, they do have a lot of money to work with.
We just, we just, I'd, I'd much rather have the county in charge, but we just can't sit here and wait and wait and wait on them.
Can we make August seventeenth's drop-dead work? Yes, we checked on that, we can. But I, it can't get extended again, that's, and, and if it does, you will risk your, your sewer project timeline. It will not make bids, because they have to publish it, they have to do their certain three weeks pro- process.
I will say, I don't like the agreement anyway, because there's no build-out for Foley. We're not even on equal footing with the dairy farmers, much less a priority. And I, to me, that was an essential part of the agreement, and have we just given up on that?
It was just city buildings.
If we want to own it, then we got to go our way, and I don't think we should.
We don't have, that's a lot of money, the county's got the money. I, I guess what I'm seeing though is, we've given them a timeline, and I want to see more spirit of cooperation with them. I mean, this is pretty cut and dry, that this is our timeframe. We need to keep going forward, but I certainly want them to be a partner with us, they have the money.
We do, we are, but we...
But our time, we can't slow down our wastewater, if, if...
So, I, I just need council to, you know, action, I, I think the council needs to act, if they want to do that, I'd recommend you act and approve what we're comfortable with, and put it in their cor- I mean, I, I hate for it to all of a sudden, they come back, make more changes, then we got to meet. Like, that's going to delay it, if you're comfortable with this. If you're not, then that's, that's the answer.
I think it's their move, I don't see why we should agree to something that they don't agree to. I mean, this is, they're not agreeing to it, so...
I would, I would recommend we let the county know, we have to know, we have to, by the seventeenth for sure. If they haven't given us answer by then, they're out.
Well, okay, but tell them what, I mean, they're going to think it's an open negotiation again, so that's the, I need a, I need a line in the sand.
Can we approve this tonight?
Yep.
Do you guys approve this tonight? Sign it, send it back for them to sign, and?
Yep.
I mean, the, the changes are like three minor changes in here, I think, right?
Yep, yep, it's, it's pretty mi- from where we were at, we were not that far apart.
Adam is okay with this?
Yes, Adam, Adam thinks this is the best deal he can get us, maybe that's the best way to put it.
Well, I'd make a motion that we approve the joint powers agreement for the fiber optic.
And send it back to the county.
And...
The only other thing we might stress is a little more combination of, of helping us with our build-out process of some sort. We can get some kind of mutual agreement where, you know, do, I'm sure they won't give us a money amount, but give us some indication that there would be some, uh, uh, mutual help from the county.
They verbally have indicated that, I think they even indicated at the one meeting you sat at, you know, that, that...
Right.
They're still open to that, but putting it in writing is just something that they're real hesitant to do.
I know, they, they, they indicate...
They don't want to commit so much of anything in writing.
They might be, if they could or would, but, yeah, it didn't sound like they were going to give us any money.
I think part of that is legally, I think the attorneys are indicating, you know, that could be problematic for them.
Yeah, because they'd have to do it.
Okay, there was a motion made, do we have a second?
Do we have a deadline?
Right, now it's my...
Two weeks is the deadline.
Okay.
The seventeen.
So, the motion was?
So, we're going, we're making a motion for this agreement with no other options.
And if there is no signed agreement by the county on the seventeenth, I proceed with the super-fast contingency plan to get something in the, and move ahead on the city, on, on, at this, as the city by ourselves, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And what is that cost, if we got to go without the county?
Um, what is it, what is the conduit?
That's just going to get thrown on the wastewater.
Was it one, one fifty, a hundred and fifty thousand for conduit?
Yeah, conduit prices are up per our twenty-three project, but Mindon's telling us.
The original quote was a hundred and fifty thousand to put in that conduit. And then we go back to the provider for them to run the fiber with that through, so... The city doesn't get the payment, but we have to, we have to put out for that hundred and fifty, that we, we're back initially, and it might be a little higher, is what I'm hearing.
Do we have a second for the motion?
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Most in carry.
Okay. Sarah, did you get that, it's four to one?
Can we, moving on, any new business?
Well, where, where are we on the wastewater, we didn't talk about that.
Um, and then...
Do we have a route or anything, or, I mean, do we?
Yeah, we do have a route, um, uh, so, we have another meeting tomorrow, right, with City St. Cloud?
Yes, we do.
Yep. Um, so, we have a meeting tomorrow with City St. Cloud, so we signed the wastewater treatment agreement, they also signed it, so that's fully executed, and, um, those plans are going in, they actually, we actually signed off on the sanitary sewer extension permit this week. Um, they are pressing ahead, so right now they have in armored fiber. Um, they are looking to add a conduit for this with the, the county. Um, that is all, like, that work is pretty much done, that armored fiber, that piece that we authorized, that the county's reimbursing us for. Um, but I, I don't, don't know what we're discussing tomorrow at the meeting with St. Cloud.
I don't know if there's anything specific, it's our monthly update.
You know, the, the plans are into the state, we needed that sanitary sewer extension permit, which was triggered by the wastewater treatment agreement, so everything is moving ahead. Um, I have been working on, um, I'll have some rate, potential rate structures for you at the budget meeting, talk about how we're going to incorporate that and, and move forward with those rate adjustments. Um, but, I mean, everything is on track to, to bid, assuming this doesn't hold us down. So, we will hopefully have, um, some numbers in, uh, what, month, month or so, month and a half? Yeah, and, uh, right now, we haven't gotten any alerts that quantities are going to be difficult. They, I, we just talked about it a couple of weeks ago, but, you know, we don't know what's, there's a lot of very, uh, variable things going on in the market. So, I guess we will see what happens once we bid. Um, the county piece would be bid as an addendum to the project. And it has specifically been identified in the agreement that the city has sole control. If something goes haywire with the fiber, the sewer project can still move ahead, we still have that control, that was crucial. We have control and ownership of the sewer project, so, does that help, Jack, or is that, okay, good?
And also, we're working on all the right-of-way stuff, um, you know, we have those easements, I mean, and all that. We're going to, uh, we're working the townships, I think we're going to St. George next Tuesday, and Mindon next Tuesday, and obviously, we were missing Gilmoreton tonight, so that's going to have to wait till September, but working all that stuff out just to get all the permits and everything from them. All the county permits should be turned in very shortly, because each road, you got to do a separate permit. So, uh, all that stuff is being processed too at this time, so, everything like that, the, it's moving, coming to a head, you know?
There is so much, there, honestly, there's so much back and forth, I can't even keep everything all straight, it's just all coming together.
Okay, any new business? Can we get a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all everybody's in favor, meeting adjourned.
Aye.
Camera ain't late.